Regular meeting number 21 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
properly signed. I am President Pro Tem Miller, the United States of America. We are proud that we should stand on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father Martin Luther, please.
Almighty and ever-living God, as the glorious spring continues to be revealed, we thank you for this time of year in which we are renewed by new growth and the pageantry of beauty displayed by the multitude of blossoms. May we share in this richness of nature on this Earth Day and be protectors of our environment and also see ourselves as growing and blossoming in life. We pray for recent victims of terror and tragedy, especially for those at the Boston Marathon and those residing in West Texas. May those who died receive eternal peace and may the survivors receive divine healing and consolation. We express gratefulness for all the efforts of police officers and firefighters who put their lives on the line in responding to these incidents that caused massive trauma. We thank you for our local police and emergency fire and emergency workers who act with bravery every day to protect the citizens of Columbus and work to restore order and peace. We pray to affirm the common dignity of each other and to serve in humility rather than to dominate with arrogance. We pray for the members of city council as they embark upon another meeting that through divine wisdom and counsel, the common good is promoted. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
It's their second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. There any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
There any resolutions or announcements by members of council? Councilmember Craig.
Thank you, President Ginther. I'd like to ask Director Bell if he would approach the podium with his guests, if they are here, if they'd like the young people to come and family. I'd ask him to provide a briefing on the annual Civil Rights Historic Heritage Tour, starting, actually commenced on Monday, April the 2nd, and they retraced the steps of our civil rights heroes through Cincinnati, Atlanta, Tuskegee, Selma, Birmingham, Montgomery, and Memphis, Tennessee. I understand that they toured a bus with 52 Freedom Riders and returned on Saturday night, April the 6th, and I certainly want to commend these young people for attending. I understand it was during their break.
Yes.
Their school break, and so, you know, this was not just a vacation or a trip. This was really an opportunity to learn and to grow, and I'm excited to hear more about the trip and what you all learned through that process.
Thank you so much, Chair Craig, President Ginther, and members of council, and I understand how passionate this is for you, Councilman Craig, and so many others about the civil rights movement. You know, recently I and 51 other Freedom Riders went south on our annual Civil Rights Historic Heritage Tour to retrace the steps of slavery and civil rights heroes and she-ros. We started from Columbus and made stops in Cincinnati, Atlanta, Tuskegee, Montgomery, Birmingham, and our last stop in Memphis, Tennessee, at the Lorraine Motel, where it just so happened was during, was at the time of the 45th anniversary of Dr. King's assassination. Of the 52 riders, we had 19 young people under the age of 18 and three of college age. We had Capitol Kids, city leaders, the SAVE group was there, and kids from Columbus State. As we navigated each museum in a significant location, you could just see in the eyes of not only the young, but the older riders also that continued the thirst for knowledge. The tour brings us out on a roller coaster of emotions, from sadness to anger to pride. This tour would not have been possible without our partners, without our partner, the Limited Foundation, then also, we also wanted to make sure that there, sure there were scholarship opportunities for young people, and that was made possible for many of our youth thanks to Nationwide Children's Hospital, the Archie Griffin Foundation, Commissioners Karen Frum, Chris Cozad, Nancy Pion, Fran Frazier, and Rebecca Nelson. I would also like to thank Craig Bailey and Chris Barnett of the Eastern Target, along with Mike Polling of the Downtown Kroger for providing incredible healthy snacks and water for all of the tour participants throughout our five-day bus ride. Now, at this time, I'm going to bring up Ida Sewell, who's a retired teacher, who has been on, I believe, the last four tours, five tours, using her teaching skills on and off the bus for our riders, and then after that, I'll introduce also our people who are standing in front of us also, along with our young people. Ida?
Good evening, and I think it's five times. My mother keeps saying, "Why do you keep going back?" But every year, I learn something new. Every year, something is said, something different comes about, and then this year, one of our writers and a friend of mine said, "Okay, the next time they ask you, why do you keep coming back? What more can you learn? Tell them it's not what you can learn, it's what you can teach." I found myself almost like a docent because I'd been there so many times, but I also took notes feverishly, and then when we got back on the bus, the teacher in me had the children answering questions, trying to make sure, keeping in mind the fact that they were coming back to the OAA, so I didn't have closed-in questions, we had opened-in questions, and that gave them the opportunity to feel comfortable on the last day where they shared their feelings and the things that they had learned and how they felt about it and what they were going to do with that information once we got back. And we charged them with the job, with the necessity of sharing that information with their classmates, because unfortunately, in retiring from Columbus Public, I know a lot of times, we don't have the privilege, we don't have the convenience of teaching this information ourselves. Either teachers don't feel comfortable with it, it's not in the book, it's not on the test, there's a number of reasons why we don't get around to it, but of course, if we don't learn our history, if we don't engrain our history, we are destined to repeat it. So I think the children had a good time, and this year, I had the opportunity of taking my three grands and seeing it through their eyes was a whole different perspective as well. So, thank you very much. Turn over to the kids.
Okay, well, let me also just introduce, from my right, your left, would be Shirley Anderson, who's a site director of Capitol Kids, Capitol Kids at the Marion Franklin. Then next to her, we have Janice Brown, who's a city leader, and then next to her, we have Cory? Quincy, I'm sorry Cory. Cory Austin, who was with city leaders, Capitol Kids. Capitol Kids, and then we have the Capitol Kids Quincy, from Quincy Cody from Capitol Kids, and...
Reverse.
Reverse? That happened on the tour, too. I'm sorry about that. And then from SAVE, the interim director, Deidra Hamler, and then also, we talked about our sponsors, who are commissioners, Commissioner Rebecca Nelson and Commissioner Nancy Pion. So we're thankful for you for being here. So our last thing what we want to do is that, you know, we talk about our young kids and the great things that they do. We had a young, young, young man who's here today, who was able to, and I'll leave you with this, but was able to put together a rap while on the bus and just thought it up, and so I gotta have him come forward to see if he can do this. Will you be able to do this for me? Can you come on up? Yes? Okay. Now speak right into the mic. Come on up. Okay, make sure you speak right into the mic.
It would take a nation of millions to hold us back. Brown versus boards, open some doors. Back then, they called all blacks negroes. We kicked it off the top, sorta like Cerebros. Separate isn't equal, win in the practice. My school's a shack, mine is a palace. Guys sit back on the bus, that's whacknick. Second classes, and accountable blackness. They say they'll change the world, you gotta take a stand. Rose apart, stick a seat, chin the face of the land. Martin had a plan, that even though you wanna change the world, that don't mean you gotta kill another man. It's about about people like the wrong Gandhi, a pacifist in a war without an army, 'cause they can't harm me. No matter how they seen, I wonder if Mr. King is still having dreams.
Wow.
So that's our youth, and we had so many others that were also talented and really brought forth the message of King, and so we hope to continue to do this each and every year. If people are wondering, I believe our, for next year, 2014, is April 22nd, I believe, through the 26th, as always, during Columbus City Schools' spring break.
Director, I'm gonna pause here and see if there are questions or comments, council. Well, let me just say to you, and particularly for all the young people, I thank you for presenting that to me. I wrote down, I wrote down every note you see. But I really, and somebody says, "It's my turn to rap." We'll be here for a long time if I rap. But I thank you so much for going, and director, and commissioners, and faculty. I heard you. It's not just about the learning, but the teaching. And the truth is, Dr. King said, "Truth crushed to the earth, we'll rise again." And for these young people to go and experience that, to really understand what occurred, we can't sanitize that. A lot of people lost their life, they suffered, they struggled through it, through all of those days. It was, it was an important time in our history, and young people, all of us, need to understand. We ought to never get back there again. And so for you to do that, that's an important thing for our community, for our city and our nation to understand. This certainly helps all of understand the importance of civil rights, and where there are injustices anywhere, none of us can have justice anywhere where there are injustices. And so, we appreciate so much your leadership and all of you that went on the tour. We want as many young people as possible, those of us that are young in heart, to continue to participate, and thank you for going, continuing to go. You know, we're gonna try to get on that tour. Certainly, I've been to Atlanta, but that's a different kind of a thing, and to actually go to the sites and understand really what's going on. Director, I did have a quick announcement. Yes, Ms. Tyson?
Thank you, Chairman Craig, and thank you for bringing Director Bell down, some of his commission members, and these children down, because I know every year, you know, we see the sign, the poster about going on this trip, and I think that today, of course, brought different meaning to this trip, and to take the young people, it's so important, because as we sit in council chambers, we have a lot of opportunities to be able to understand other people's cultures, and I think it's so important that, one, we continue to become knowledgeable on the African-American culture and really the civil rights culture, because it really was, it was a diversity of individuals that moved the civil rights, the civil rights, the civil rights movement forward, and our children certainly don't have an opportunity to necessarily learn that, and we are very visual people, and so it's important to go and visualize this civil rights movement. And so I do appreciate the teacher who spoke and said that, and why did she keep going? Well, now she can, she can be a docent and tell the story, but it's so important, and I appreciate the work of this, of the Community Relations Commission to continue to do this work each and every year. Thank you.
Let me also mention, on Tuesday, April the 23rd, the Community Relations Commission is partnering with the Ohio Latino Affairs Commission, the U.S. Attorney's Office of the Southern District of Ohio, and the Ohio Asian American and Pacific Islanders Advisory Council. You want to talk very briefly about that, Director?
Well, that's an event, we call it a mini-conference in a sense, and it starts tomorrow at 1:00, and we kick it off then, and so we're gonna be arranging various topics in regards to civil rights, where the focus is on with the refugee and immigrant populations, to make sure that they understand what their civil rights are and where they can go if those civil rights are violated.
Okay, location and time?
Oh, it's gonna be at the Vern Rife Center, and it begins at 1:00. What you can do, because we're trying to get, we have some open spaces, but you have to, you have to register, so I advise getting hold of Abdi Sofia in our office at 645-1952, and you can do that up until probably about noon tomorrow. So please do that, call our office, and we'll make sure that we get you registered, but it's gonna be a great conference and a lot of things to be learned there, so. And then also, on one topic that you were talking about, is also within the bus that we had, it was very diverse on our bus. We had people from Asia, we had a person come from, actually from out of California to be on the tour, we had LGBT community represented on the, on the bus, so we had a wide variety, and we liked that diversity within the, on the bus and going down to, so they have a better understanding of also the African-American culture, but also, this is American history, so, and how that impacted all of us here, not only America, but the world.
All right, well, Director, thank you so much for coming down, and thank all of you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Klein? President Pro Tem Miller. Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight, I just wanted to start off this evening to discuss the Boston Marathon incident last Monday and offering my condolences to the families that have lost loved ones and those that were injured by the bombs that were set off at the finish line of the race. I also want to make sure that we thank the first responders and all of the individuals in Boston who acted with such generosity and kindness. On this terrible day, there were homes that were open to stranded runners, injured people were carried to hospitals, other runners finished and continue to run at a hospital to donate blood, and everywhere you looked, there were people helping people, and the ability for us to witness the resilience of the human spirit was tremendous. But finally, I want to assure our Columbus residents that safety is certainly a part of every step in our planning of events. The city works collaboratively to work with the race and event promoters to make sure that we all can be safe and enjoy our wonderful city, so we want to encourage people to continue to come out and enjoy all the activities throughout the city. Our police officers and firefighters are involved in planning and staging and the producing of all events, and if you attend the events, it's certainly not, not to cost anyone anything to say thank you as you're along the race or along the route to our first responders who are working to provide safety for us each and every day. It is also incumbent of all of us to be a part of our own safety on any given day, whether it's an event day, a race day, or any, safety is a responsibility of all of us, and we need all eyes and ears around at all times, and I want to continue to encourage our residents to be engaged in the safety for us all, so many of you may have heard that if you see something, say something, and I want to encourage our residents to do the same. I'm looking forward to our events this spring and hope that throughout our spring and summertime, we'll have as much participation and then some. We're certainly working to make sure that safety is for everyone to enjoy and continue to enjoy our events, and I just want to make sure that you all join me in making our events a success and getting out and feeling safe with our city. Our first responders are there, and they will be there and continue to protect us and continue to increase the safety in our city. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, President Ginther. Today, we have a special guest that we've brought into chambers. Director Davies has brought Herb Johannis, Johansson, who was recently named the Administrator of the Division of Power. Mr. Johansson has been Assistant Administrator for the Utilities Department since 2007, after being hired as Project Manager in 2004. A certified professional engineer, he has prior public sector experience with the state of Ohio, and he has also been an engineering consultant in the private sector, including positions with Santech, RD Zandi, and associates in the URS Corporation. I would like to welcome Mr. Johansson to the Department of Power and look forward to your prosperous work there. He is in chambers today. Also, speaking of the Department of Public Service and Transportation and Utilities, today is Earth Day, and all week, there are hundreds of volunteer activities across the region. This year marks Greens Columbus' 7th Annual Earth Day Celebration, and over the past seven years, Green Columbus Earth Day efforts have resulted in over 40,000 hours of donated labor, and the last three years alone, volunteers planted 19,000 trees throughout the region, and beginning this past weekend and throughout the rest of the week, hundreds of volunteers across central Ohio will be planting trees, pulling invasives, cleaning up neighborhoods, preparing gardens, and more at over 100 volunteer activities across this region. On Saturday, April 27th, I'd like to invite you and your friends to join Mayor Coleman and me at Columbus Commons, celebrating and commemorating our Earth Day 2013 accomplishments. There will be local bands, our famous food trucks, environmental groups, green business, and more. If you would like to volunteer for Earth Week this week, you can go online and visit And in line with Earth Day, we will segue into, this is the week for the Harmony Project activities. Along with Earth Day, the community service is beginning, began today. Hundreds of volunteers, local residents, and local businesses will clean, plant trees, paint murals, and build a playground in the Streetcar District of Livingston Avenue between Parsons Avenue and Nelson Road and the city's south side. This project will connect residents to each other, their neighborhood, and local businesses to build unity and civic pride. Tomorrow, murals reflecting 100 years of history in the Livingston Avenue neighborhood will be created by local artists and then painted and mounted by the volunteers. On Wednesday, a new state-of-the-art playground will be installed in Fairwood Park, and on Thursday, a sculpture and landscaping is to be installed, completing the plans for the north side of Livingston Avenue, Nelson Road, and the east entrance of the Streetcar District. 100 trees are to be planted on Friday at the Jewish Community Center along Livingston Avenue at South High School and in Fairwood Deschler Driving Park. And on Saturday, April 27th, South High School Harmony Choir students will clean 100 blocks around South High School. So thank you to the Harmony Project. Are there any comments, possibly Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much for that recap, that announcement. They are fully engaged. I was over there this, this morning. The volunteers are, have painted the VFW, they're working all over Livingston Avenue. I saw Treasure Ellinard out painting today, and I said, "Do you know what you're doing?" But he was out this morning, and it's exciting. Mr. Johnson, Jim Johnson, was out this morning. I, you know, I have to reflect back on Mr. Holloman, Herb Holloman, and Cliff Tyree, and many of those for decades, that has made just an indelible imprint, not only on the life of that community, but our city and our nation, and, but this is a true opportunity for community collaboration with the Jewish Community Center, public-private entities, nonprofits, certainly the Harmony Project as a, the lead organization, and certainly David Brown as a visionary on this project. So it's exciting, there are many things that are going on this week, and I hope to be active in the community bill, and thank God, we've got folks to know what they're doing, but I will be there that day, working, working on that project. But great, thank you very much for mentioning that tonight, Ms. Paley.
That's all, President Ginther. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, I have one resolution this evening, and then I have a couple of announcements. I have Resolution 0095X-2013, and I'm gonna ask Lisa Lambert, the CEO, the Chief Executive Officer, for Communities and Schools to come to the podium. This resolution is to honor and recognize communities and schools of central Ohio on the occasion of its 20th anniversary, whereas in the United States, a student drops out of school every 26 seconds, and whereas the lives of more than 1.2 million children are helped through the efforts of Communities and Schools, Inc., a national organization of nearly 200 local affiliates in 27 states and in DC. And whereas the commission of communities and schools, the mission of the communities and schools is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and to excel in life by addressing barriers to achievement, such as hunger, poverty, violence, and substance abuse. And whereas Communities and Schools of Central Ohio is currently providing programming and staff to 26 elementary, middle, and high schools to assist students at risk of dropping out or failing school. And whereas the programs of Communities and Schools of Central Ohio include School Resource Coordinators, Life After School, Learn After School, Stable Families Program, Diplomas Now, Exceptional Leaders Inspired Through Excellence, known as ELITE, and Support for Somali Students. And whereas the Board of Trustees and Staff of Communities and Schools of Central Ohio have worked together to cultivate relationships with local businesses, social service agencies, healthcare providers, and parent and youth volunteer organizations to provide the necessary resources, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that we do hereby honor Communities and Schools of Central Ohio for 20 years of devoted service to the well-being and success of students in central Ohio, and wish them continued success in their noble and earnest mission. I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Ginther, and council members, for this resolution and for this recognition of our 20 years of work and service to central Ohio. We consider it an honor, and we consider it an honor and privilege to have served the central Ohio community and its students. We work to prevent kids from dropping out of school even as early as third grade. Our children are challenged now, there are so many of them that are suffering so many things, as Councilmember Tyson announced in the resolution, and our goal is to make sure that we address those needs, we provide interventions and services to prevent them from dropping out. We want to make sure that our kids have the best opportunity for success. They face so many things before they even enter the school building, and our goal is to make sure that we are helping them make sense of their environment and navigate the things that they see before they enter that classroom. We thank you so much for this resolution, and we look forward to another 20 years of serving central Ohio and its students. Thank you. I also have with me my board president, Board of Trustee member, Tim Reader.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the honor. I was born and raised here in Columbus, graduated from Columbus Public Schools, so it's, it's an honor to be on the board and serve and help give back to the community and communities and schools, so appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for your service. What school did you attend in Columbus?
Walnut Ridge High School.
Walnut Ridge?
A few years ago.[1798.76] A few years ago.
Well, thank you. And I don't know if anyone has any comments, but thank you so much for the work that you do in our schools. It really is vitally important that we offer those other services, that you're that link to those services in the community for our young people so that they can move ahead and be successful. You are very, very valuable to our community, and thank you for your 20 years of service.
Thank you so much.
As Councilmember Paley just mentioned, this is Earth Day, and I just want to acknowledge that today, at Franklin Park Conservatory and Botanical Gardens, we kicked off Earth Day there with lots of volunteers, providing service to the 34 community garden recipients from the dollars that the mayor and this council gave to these 34 organizations. And it was really a great day to be in Franklin Park Conservatory and to see the diversity of the groups that are recipients of these dollars, that will make sure that they will be growing healthy fruits and vegetables. It certainly will involve a lot of community building, and it's just a great opportunity for our community to repurpose land. So, it was a great day. I want to thank Scott's Miracle Grow. The Franklin County Commissioners are also a partner with us. I want to thank Clean Turn. I want to thank Kelly Arthur Hikes. And also, I want to thank Barb Sekler and the Columbus Public Health Department for all the work that they have done this whole year to make this such a successful day. So, great day for Earth Day. Also, I want to announce, just say a thank you to the Gay Street Collaborative District Association. Last week, last Saturday, and this will take place the second Saturday of every month, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, that the Gay Street Collaborative will open downtown businesses to share their products with our community. It was a lot of fun, but it's a great way to be able to bring businesses and people to the downtown area on a Saturday night. And I look forward, with all these great sidewalk vendors and clothing retailers, bakers, it was just a great evening. And if you want more information about this event, it's called wwwmoonlightmarketcolumbus.com. And this Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM, Ohio Health will host its fifth medication disposal day at six of its healthcare, at six healthcare systems across central Ohio. Bring your expired and unused prescription and over-the-counter medications to one of the participating locations, and law enforcement officers will dispose of these medications in a safe, legal, and environmentally conscious manner. Participating locations include Riverside Methodist Hospital, Grant Medical Center, Doctors Hospital, Dublin Methodist Hospital, Grady Memorial, and the Westerville Medical Campus. For more information, including directions, please visit ohiohealth.com/meddisposal. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration? City Auditor, City Attorney?
This time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the Consent Action portion of the agenda in the Finance Committee, 0777-2013, and from Health and Human Services, 0844-2013. Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the Consent Action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So moved.
Sir Second. Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 911-2013, Development Committee Ordinance 938-2013, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance 922-2013, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 530, 644, 646, 801, and 841-2013, zoning committee ordinance is 0854, 924, 925, and 935-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 96X and 97X-2013, Finance Committee Ordinance 806, 835, 843, and 857-2013, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance 954-2013, Development Committee Ordinance is 872, 874, and 913-2013, Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 859, 898-2013, and Resolution 91X-2013, Small and Minority Business Development Ordinance 923-2013, Technology Committee Ordinance 791-2013, Public Safety and Judiciary Committee Ordinance is 822, 855, and 879-2013, Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 566, 671, 821, 826, 866-2013, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 593, 616, 619, 679, 767, 877, 836, and 919-2013.
We do have one speaker signed up on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium, share your name, address, and the organizations you represent. You have signed up to speak on 0872-2013 in the Development Committee. Mr. Wilkins, you have three minutes to address the top.
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, the chairman of solely vacant and abandoned properties in the North London area. My main concern is, I just want to know what this property will be used for, how long it's been holding in a land bank, and what your purpose will be used for, if I can get more clarification on that. Say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions, comments for Mr. Wilkins? Interim Director Brandon, is there any response you can offer, counsel, based on Mr. Wilkins' questions, or would you follow up with him after the meeting to discuss this in more detail?
Sure. Thank you, President Ginther, members of council. This legislation authorizes the transfer of properties at 784 East Columbus Street and 791 East Columbus Street to the Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Families organization through Nationwide Children's Hospital. This property is going to be constructed to new single-family homes, and each lot will be sold as owner-occupied units. So, that's the intention of this property transfer.
Thank you, Interim Director Brandon. Any questions regarding legislation or anything on the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So moved.
Sir Second. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes, with the exception of 872-2013, 913-2013, on which I'm abstaining.
Miller? Mills?
Yes, with the exception of 0806-2013, on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. The first ordinance is 0824-2013. It's to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to modify a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Amoresco, Inc., for energy-efficient improvements to various City of Columbus facilities, to authorize expenditure of $1,435,845 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. Well, tonight, we have, in the director's seat, we have Deputy Director Dave Bush, who's worked hard on a lot of these ordinances this evening. Would you like to make some comments regarding this particular ordinance?
Good evening, Councilwomen and the members of council. And we didn't plan it, by the way, with this appearing tonight on Earth Day. I have to remember that I was there 40 years ago. This is an ordinance with Amoresco. We originally came to you back about a year and a half ago and had an initial arrangement with Amoresco to do an audit. What they have done is come back and made proposals to make improvements at 10 police precincts, 1393, and the fire training academy down on Parsons Avenue. They'll put a variety of energy-related improvements, boiler replacements, lighting, water, and other energy-saving devices on the building, and then they'll guarantee those savings. So, if we don't achieve those over time, assuming we haven't violated our side of the agreement, they're contractually bound to guarantee those improvements and those savings.
Thank you, Deputy Director, and this is, again, the commitment we've made to our residents when they voted for us to have the income tax increase. And so, these improvements will reduce energy consumption, replace existing equipment that's beyond its useful life, save operational dollars, and increase occupant comfort and productivity to better serve the occupants of these buildings. And so, with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0853-2013, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Alfred, Inc., for the city print room, to authorize the expenditure of $731,978 from the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund, and to declare an emergency. The print room will be relocated to the southwest storefront area of the Front Street parking garage. This new ground-level location for the city print room will provide for greater operational efficiency, properly up for fully functional printing operation, and provide for optimal ventilation and power needs, and easy access to and from the offices and agencies of the city that utilizes these print services. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0886-2013, to authorize expenditure of $929,483 from the Property Management Fund, and $379,442 from the 2013 general fund for payments to Paradigm Properties of Ohio LLC, for the second year of facilities management agreement with Paradigm Properties of Ohio LLC, and to declare an emergency. And this is for the Building Management Services at the Jerry Hammond Center, 1111 East Broad Street, and the Franklin County Municipal Court Building at 375 South High Street. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 0777-2013, to authorize a city auditor to transfer $123,240 within the Fleet Management Division's Bond Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners to perform an environmental audit and assessment of the city's fuel and generator sites, to authorize expenditure of $313,700 from the Fleet Management Division's Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. And Deputy Director Dave Bush, I know you have comments regarding this ordinance.
Councilwoman Tyson, thank you, other members of council. First of all, even though it's Green Day, we're a little bit red with embarrassment because we do have to amend this ordinance, and we've submitted that to your office. The ordinance itself waives the provisions of competitive bidding, and we neglected to include that language in the title. So, that's the amendment in front of you. EMS, Environmental Management System, was originally initiated by the Department of Public Utilities back in 2006, and essentially, it develops a deep audit of a lot of their environmental vulnerabilities, and helps them, and we believe would help us, in better planning the capital infrastructure, the operational protocols, regulatory requirements and the like. And in our case particularly, because of the fact that we control over 51 fueling sites that on them have over 95 fuel tanks, and we have 64 sites containing city generators, which also have tanks. So, there's environmental risk in that, although it was conducted or performed by a vendor some years ago. You might remember the Alum Creek situation where the vendor punctured a tank. So, it's very important that we have the right regulatory and environmental systems in place, and that we follow proper protocols, and that we properly budget. So, we believe that sticking with Gresham Partners is in our best interest. It allows us to build on the partnership and in a more seamless way, and we're able to use some of the material that they develop for public utilities for the betterment of the rest of the city agencies. And we hope that you'll agree with us and support the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Director Bush, so first, I move to remove from consent. Remove from consent. And now, I want to request to amend, as submitted to clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I would now like to move to Health and Human Services. The only ordinance in Health and Human Services is 0860-2013, to authorize the Board of Health to enter into revenue contracts beginning July 1 of 2013 with the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, five selected managed care organizations, and any additional plans that are approved for reimbursement for services provided to eligible Medicaid clients at Columbus Public Health Clinics. And Dr. Long, do make comments on this legislation, please.
Council Chair Tyson, President Ginther, and members of council, yes, I can be very quick. Actually, we have long had contracts with the two active Medicaid providers here in Franklin County, that being CareSource and Molina Healthcare. The state, over the past year, decided to rebid and look for five eligible and certified managed care plans, Medicaid managed care plans, that would work throughout the state. So, while it took a lot of doing and rebidding, et cetera, these are the five, and they are Buckeye Community Health Plan, CareSource, Molina Healthcare, Paramount Advantage, and United Healthcare of Ohio. These are the five state-approved vendors, and we anticipate, and actually, they have approached us about having contracts with each of them to serve our Medicaid-eligible clients. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, but these would be revenue dollars to be reimbursed for the care that we provide for Medicaid, persons on Medicaid here in Columbus and Franklin County.
Having no caring, no questions, move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. If you will now turn to page 5, have Resolution 0844-2013, to approve the grant application of the Columbus Federation of Settlements seeking financial assistance to address an emergency human service need pursuant to the Columbus Code 1959, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Columbus Federation of Settlements to assist in the purchase of vehicles for the continued provision of transportation services, to authorize the appropriation of $64,000 from the unappropriated balance of the Emergency Human Services Fund to the Department of Development, to authorize expenditure of $64,000 from the Emergency Human Services Fund, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask Pam McCarthy, who is from the Central Community House, but she's representing Columbus Federation of Settlements, and Mr. Bill Owens, to come to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Tyson, and President Ginther, and city council members. I have with me Pam McCarthy from Central Community House, and my name is Bill Owens. I'm the Director of the Clintonville Beachwald Community Resources Center. We're one of six settlement houses here in Columbus, Ohio, members of the Columbus Federation of Settlements. Settlement houses in Columbus, unlike any other human service agency, we provide services and address opportunities in our neighborhoods to help those folks in need. Those, unlike other agencies that have a focus on a particular population or a particular social problem, our focus is geographic. So, we look at folks in our neighborhood and So we look at folks in our neighborhood and look at the situations they're in and see how we can help them out. This evening, what we're hoping you're able to help us with is the need for our seniors and for our children and folks in need of employment to be able to get to and from their destinations safely, efficiently, and effectively such that so that they can meet their goals and be able to receive these needed services. Just last year, we were able to provide over a thousand round trips to grocery stores and food pantries for our seniors, and also be able to provide them with five hundred trips to social outings, to be able to get out of the house, out with other people, and to be able to socialize. These funds are going to help us to purchase three vans for childcare, two vans for seniors, and a van for us, for Godman Guild, to be able to provide transportation for young adults to be able to seek employment. For our seniors, they're frequently unable to get to a grocery store to be able to get fruits and vegetables and to be able to buy good food. If you haven't had the opportunity to see the recent movie, A Place at the Table, one of the statistics that came out is, in the past, since nineteen eighty to two thousand twelve, the price of fruits and vegetables has gone up by forty percent. During that same time, the price of junk food has gone down by forty percent. So for those of our fellow citizens that have very limited income, they have increased food insecurity, that is, that they're continually having to buy lower-quality food and have poor nutrition because of their inability to buy good-quality food and take care of their nutritional needs. And this program is able to help folks with that and to address their isolation. Pam's going to address some of the benefits of the childcare programs that this will be able to help.
Good evening, city council members. Actually, it's two childcare vehicles that are going to serve three agencies, which are Central Community House, Neighborhood House Incorporated, and Gladden Community House. So we're being very resourceful in sharing some vehicles so that we can move kids and families around. I'd just like to say that probably in this upcoming year, we're going to be facing that you need to have certified vehicles for to transfer children who are in licensed childcare or after-school programs. And these vehicles will enable us to do a lot with our children as far as getting them to activities such as, you know, outings, to the zoo, COSI, library story hours, even to health screenings, and in some cases, even to get them to our centers and back home. But I'd like to say also that these vehicles will help us. Many of our families do not have resources, neither money nor transportation, to do things together as a family. And you will see the Federation will probably be using these vehicles to transport families. Like, we regularly take families, and they have children in hand, and they need to get to charity newsies, and it's very difficult to do that on a bus with a couple of kids, as you can imagine. So things like this, this will make it great for us to be able to do that. And I'd like to say that this is a great collaboration that we have going in that currently now, we have a Young Astronauts program, but we don't have a vehicle right now, and Bill is providing transportation, so we help each other out. So if we have a number of kids we need to get somewhere, we can always count on our brother and sister agencies to help us out. So I want to thank you for your consideration and investment in this very real barrier to many people in our community. People really, transportation stops them from getting job training, going to work. It can be a barrier to getting folks to childcare. And even like in my community, we don't even have a laundromat. I don't know how people with children actually take all their laundry and go to the laundromat. So I think transportation continues to be a problem in people's daily lives, and I think the Federation, and this is a first step for us to really take it to another level and honestly serve thousands of people in our city. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Pam and Bill, and sharing the importance of these vans to your community. And I tell you, these dollars are being leveraged nationwide. Nationwide, insurance is also leveraging, is leveraging our money, our money's being leveraged with their money, to be able to provide vans to the settlement houses. So thank you, and I'm glad you mentioned that the Ohio Child Care License and transportation regulations are going to be changing, and how important it is to have these type of vans. So thank you for the work that you do each and every day, and also, as you mentioned in your discussion here, I mean, this really is the issue around poverty and what we're doing to try to help move people out of poverty, and that's the work that you guys do every single day. So thank you for being here, and I'm hopeful that my council members heard your plea and will be in agreement to support this legislation this evening.
Thank you. And I'd like to mention PNC was a marvelous partner in this also. So thank you.
Thank you. There are no questions or comments? I would move for passage with a voice vote.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills.
I'm staying.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. I would now like to move to workforce development. Thank you. The first ordinance on workforce development is zero nine five five dash two thousand and thirteen is to authorize the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Per Scolis to provide technical training, workforce literacy, and soft skills and technology education to low-income individuals, to authorize expenditure of fifty thousand dollars from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, and to declare an emergency. And I see the Executive Director, Andrea Applegate, is here. Do you want to come to the podium and say a few words, and then I'll allow President Protem Miller to be able to make any comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Ginther, Councilmember Miller, the rest of city council, thank you so much. My name is Andrea Applegate. I'm the Director of the Per Scolis. We are a nonprofit that provides job training for unemployed and underemployed adults. As Councilmember Tyson indicated, we provide this job training that leads to A-plus certification and employment in IT. And we're very grateful to the support of city council that allows us to provide this training. We are recruiting for our third class. We have the capacity to serve twenty individuals, and we just recently celebrated the graduation of eighteen adults, sixteen of whom already have their A-plus certification and they're working to find employment. Thank you very much.
President Protem Miller, any comments?
Yes, I do. The Per Scolis program is something that is dear to me because of the, actually, the life-changing events that happen after they get certified. At one of the graduations, one of your students did land a position, and from being unemployed to making close to forty thousand dollars is life-changing, just for him and also for his family. And that's why I'm encouraging others, and the public, and the youth, about the wide ranges of employment opportunities within the IT field. And remember, the IT field is not always sitting at a computer, looking and doing programming. There's a wide variety of things within the technology field. So I'm encouraging those who are also in transitional phase in their life, who sometimes are, you know, looking at the opportunities of job employment, is to look at the technology field. And the Per Scolis program came to Columbus, you're starting your third class, correct?
Correct.
Right. And the goal is, is to make those classes larger with individuals going into the IT field. And remember, these are for those who are unemployed or low-income. So I think this is going to be something that I'm going to make sure that, you know, that we look at the program, see its success in the future, and look at helping you getting other partnerships in your endeavor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. I just mentioned, I was at, Andrea, Andrea. I was on Friday, I was at the Amethyst's annual luncheon, and it was amazing. Each of the individuals who have been a part of Amethyst went up to the podium and shared their story. And the one young lady, as she was sharing her story, she stated that she wants to be a part of this program. And it was really nice to be able to see that, the organizations that we're supporting as a council and as a city, that they're hearing about each other and wanting to be in each other's programs. And so we'll make sure that we connect you and Jenny around this young lady. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Miller, Mills Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is zero nine five six dash two thousand thirteen to authorize the appropriation of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Jobs Growth Fund to the Department of Development, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into contracts with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation and dress for success to provide support for critical workforce development programs, and to authorize expenditure of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Jobs Growth Fund and to declare an emergency. We have two speakers on this legislation. We have Vicki Bowen Hughes from Dress for Success, and Susan Coleman, Toba for CoWIC. If you guys will both, if you ladies will two come up to the podium, that'd be great.
My name is Vicki Bowen Hughes. I'm the Executive Director of Dress for Success Columbus. I want to thank President Ginther and Councilwoman Tyson for helping our mission, and I want everybody on city council to know how critical this legislation is for Dress for Success Columbus, as our mission helps women who are disadvantaged, unemployed, but job-ready, and really striving to achieve. Many know our organization as a nonprofit organization that helps women through our suiting boutique, that provides head-to-toe suiting to prepare for job interviews. But less well-known is our career center and our personal and professional development programs and our employment retention program. We witness women regain their dignity and see them start to hold their shoulders back, regain their confidence, and then, once they go on a job interview, come back and enroll in our professional development programs that truly help them and their families move forward. Ninety-six percent of the women we serve, we meet when they are in poverty. The most of the women that we work with, over seventy-nine percent, are single mothers, and a quarter are homeless. Nearly twenty percent are transitioning from incarceration, but one hundred percent of the women that we work with are worthwhile, and they are looking to secure employment, and they are job-ready. In our first year in two thousand and seven, we assisted under one hundred women. Last year, in two thousand and twelve, we assisted over one thousand. So over the last five years, we have had the opportunity to empower more than four thousand women in our community, helping them and their families really achieve their potential and beyond. And I welcome everyone to come to Dress for Success Columbus, so you can witness the empowering programs that we're honored to support.
Thank you so much for the work that you do in supporting women to move forward in their lives. Thank you. Ms. Tolbert? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Ginther, Councilmember Tyson, other members of council. I'd like to introduce to you Frankie Nylan, who is with the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, and I serve as the President and CEO. Frankie is the Director of Workforce Services for Adults, and tonight, we'd like to just share a little bit about what we'd like to do with the Southern Gateway Initiative. One of the things that we have realized here in the city of Columbus is that we're enjoying a very low unemployment rate, something that all of us can be very proud of. But there are certain neighborhoods that are experiencing very high unemployment rates, and one of those areas happens to be in the Southern Gateway. We're looking at double-digit rates of unemployment, individuals who have been displaced from their jobs now for over two years. And at the Central Ohio Workforce Investment Corporation, we want to work with the city to try and improve the opportunities for those residents. And therefore, with your assistance and your support, which we are very, very grateful for, we want to offer skills gap training. We want to be very laser-focused on the individuals who have worked for all their lives and have found themselves out of work, have skills, maybe not the skills that the employers on the South Side are looking for. And so what we want to do is to work with the community college, other vocational career centers, colleges, and universities to develop specific trainings for these individuals. We're very proud of the outreach we've been doing on the South Side, specifically with the Southern Gateway. We've been working very closely with Reverend Edgar and the Church for All People. Frankie serves on the Employment Committee for the Southern Gateway Initiative and can tell you specifically about how we're going to move forward and build on the outreach that we've been doing. I'll just tell you a little bit, some of you may know Greg Winbusch. He spends a lot of time out on the South Side and other neighborhoods, working with the residents, working with different organizations, building up relationships so that we'll know exactly what the people need in these communities. We're also working with the employers and trying to find out from them, what are you looking for? What kind of skill sets do people really need to have so that we can customize the training? And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Frankie so that she can tell you a little bit more about how we'd like to move forward with your support.
Good evening. We're really grateful that we're included in the Southern Gateway Initiative, because CoWIC, as you may know, we not only prepare residents or job seekers for the jobs that are available, but the jobs of the future. Now, one of the things that we found out is that when we go to the employers, they not only want to see occupational skills, but they also are asking for soft skills. So we go to the employers and we ask them, you know, what type of individuals are you looking to fill these positions? So that we'll know when we develop these soft skill classes, like, you know, getting to work on time, what to wear for these different positions, how to interact with your team, your communication skills. All of this stuff is important so that not only can we get these individuals job-ready and in front of an employer, that they will know how to conduct an interview, or, you know, be, know how to answer the interview questions, and really be prepared for that job. But also, the second part is that we want to provide occupational skills training. That's why we go to the employers and say, what are the skills that they need other than, you know, the soft skills? One of the employers has already asked that we provide on-the-job training for specific skills that they have, where they have over two hundred positions that are available. So what we want to do is provide specific skills for those specific employers. Also, we're working with the community-based organizations, like Suzanne said, so that we can do some outreach and make sure that the job seekers, the residents in these areas, know about the program, so that we can get them, you know, involved in coming in, finding out what it's all about, training them with the soft skills, occupational skills, so that they will not only be able to get a job, but also retain a job, because, you know, they will have the proper skills. So we're working as a team with the nonprofit organizations, the employers, as well as, you know, CoWIC developing the relationships, so that we can make sure that we're providing what's needed on all grounds, with the job what's needed on all grounds, with the job seekers, the employers, and the community-based organizations.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for coming down this evening. We're looking forward to hearing the success of the Southern Gateway Project. We also look forward to hearing the success of all of them, Per Scola's and for Dress for Success. And thank you for coming down this evening. Thank you.
If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage and call for a voice vote. Second.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein, Miller, Mills.
Mustang.
Paley, Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is 098982, that's 2013, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a contract with the South Central Ohio Minority Supplier Development Council for the purposes of supporting the new MBE Academy, to authorize the appropriation of $60,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund, to the Department of Development, to authorize expenditure of $60,000 from the Jobs Growth Fund, and to declare an emergency. This will be a 12-month program with approximately 20 MBEs. The kickoff will be in May. And with that, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, I have ordinance 0267-2013 to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to enter into a contract with the law firm of Baker &amp; Hostetler, LLP, for the purpose of providing assistance with collective bargaining negotiations and related activities, to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from the Employee Benefits Fund, to waive the competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. This legislation will authorize the Director of Human Resources to enter into a contract with Baker &amp; Hostetler, LLP, and will further authorize the expenditure of $100,000 to compensate the contractor for services rendered in conjunction with collective bargaining negotiations and related activities. The competitive bidding process would exacerbate an already protracted process and would not be conducive to bringing the negotiations to closure in expeditious fashion. Therefore, competitive bidding requirements are being waived. The Department of Human Resources seeks the authority to utilize the services of Baker &amp; Hostetler, LLP, for the collective bargaining negotiation and related activities. The law firm of Baker &amp; Hostetler, LLP, has been solicited to provide assistance because of its expertise or an experience representing the city of Columbus in previous negotiations with all bargaining units. Deputy Director Bass, please provide additional comments relative to this ordinance, specifically relating to the wave of competitive bidding.
Thank you, Chairman Craig, President Ginther, and other members of council. In 2013, the city will be involved in FOP and IAFF grievance arbitration and court-related matters to defend the implementation of a GPS system. It is our desire to utilize the services of Baker &amp; Hostetler, LLP, to assist in these proceedings. They are responsible for the negotiations of police and fire contracts. They have 15 years of experience in negotiations for the city. And there is an immediate need to continue their service. Therefore, competitive bidding requirements are being waived. I respectfully urge council's passage of this ordinance. Thank you.
Any comments or questions from colleagues? Hearing, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That is my only ordinance, but I do have several announcements, President Ginther. First is the VA collection boxes for hospitalized veterans. Want to make sure that we publicly make these announcements. This is an opportunity for all persons interested in supporting this effort to make contributions to our hospitalized veterans. Just in the way of listing the possible gifts or the possible volunteer opportunity or items, books, calendars, card games, coffee makers, combs or brush sets, craft kits, greeting cards, hair dryers, soap, and there's a whole litany of things that one can donate to this For further information, certainly you can contact Richard Isabel, and his number is 645-6504. Again, 645-6504. The last day for the contributions is May the 15th, and goods will be delivered on May the 9th, 10th. So I strongly encourage all that are interested to make contributions to this extremely important effort. Next, the Ohio National Guard will be this year's recipient of the American Red Cross of Central and Southern Ohio humanitarian of the year recipient. And Rick Isabel and I have the distinction of being able to be presenters or certainly to recognize the Ohio National Guard for all of their efforts. And of course, as you know, they've deployed, have been deployed, to 130 guard members to Vermont during the worst flooding in a century. And when the windstorm struck Central Ohio in June, they went door-to-door to check on health and the health and well-being of those left without power. And there are many, many other things. So the over 16,000 members strong of the Ohio National Guard, this is a tremendous distinction of honor for our men and women in uniform. And certainly, we honor them, as they're being saluted by the American Red Cross of Central and Southern Ohio. And then finally, the citywide training and development has partnered with the Columbus Young Professionals, and they'll host the Ohio Young Professionals the weekend of April the 26th through the 27th. And there'll be topics of leadership, career development, diversity, influence and communication, work and life balance, and workplace challenges. Deputy Director Bass, any comments regarding that event? All right. Well, certainly, we're excited about it. We appreciate our young professionals, and we want to certainly encourage them to stay in Columbus and get all the training that's essential for them to continue to move forward in their careers. Thank you. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. First in Development, 817-2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to modify existing agreements or enter into new agreements with various nonprofit organizations to provide maintenance and landscaping services for parcels owned by the Columbus Land Bank Program, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments? I request to remove from the table by a voice vote.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Mustang.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson. President Ginther.
Move for passage by voice vote.
Second.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mills.
Mustang.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson. President Ginther.
914-2013, to amend ordinance 2474-2012, passed by Columbus City Council on December 3, 2012, for the purpose of changing the terms of the Jobs Growth Incentive Agreement with Total Quality Logistics LLC from five years to three years and to declare an emergency. This job growth incentive agreement is based on the investment that Total Quality Logistics is making of $125,000 for the creation of 40 new jobs and the retention of 40 jobs. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
921-2013, to accept the plat entitled "All in Tangi Meadows South" from Dominion Homes, Inc., and Ohio Corporation by Matthew J. Callahan, Vice President of Land Development, owner of the plotted land, and to declare an emergency. This is a multi-department effort, and I would like to ask Director Kelsey if he could just give a brief explanation of what this means to the city of Columbus.
President Ginther, Councilmember Klein, other members of council, this is a routine plat. The procedure is that we receive a preliminary plat coming in through Director Tracy Davies' shop over at Building Zoning Services. Her office reviews that preliminary plat plan. My office reviews that preliminary plat plan. That was done some time ago. We received the final plat for this 14-lot with the cul-de-sac area in February. Director Davies' office approved it April 1. We approved it April 2. It is now before you for consideration.
Thank you, Director Kelsey. Director Davies, anything else to add? Okay. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
May I move to Recreation and Parks? There's one piece in Rec and Parks, 903-2013, to authorize the city auditor to transfer $106,000 within the voted Recreation of Parks Bond Fund 702, to authorize the city auditor to set up a certificate in the amount of $106,000 for various expenditures for labor, material and equipment in conjunction with park improvements, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget ordinance 645-2013, to authorize the expenditure of $106,000 from the voted Recreation of Parks Bond Fund 702, and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight, which parks are going to be receiving the benefit of improvements?
Councilman Klein, President Ginther, this is an ordinance we set up annually for various miscellaneous improvements that occur over a period of time. There's not specific improvements outlined or identified for this fund at this point in time, but over a period of the summer, we know that we're going to have to replace some pieces of equipment on slide, on playground equipments, for example, or a backstop needs to be rebuilt at a ball diamond, or some sidewalk or asphalt walkway needs to be replaced or repaved because it's cracked and broken up. These are generally smaller projects, under 20,000, that we get informal bids on. This allows us to go out and get those informal bids, enter into a purchase order for that work, and to move those projects forward.
Okay. Thank you, Director McKnight. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to recess regular meeting number 21.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We will recess regular meeting number 21, and we will reconvene for regular meeting number 22, the zoning committee, in just a few minutes. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Are there any communications and reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Any first readings to 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
Thank you. We will now go to the zoning committee. President Pro Tem Miller chairs the committee. Mr. Chairman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In the zoning committee tonight, we have two items. The first one is 713-2013, to rezone 251 North Hartford Avenue, being 1.03 plus or minus acres, located 117 feet north of the northeast corner of John Street and North Hartford Avenue, from M Manufacturing District to CPD Commercial Plan Development District. The applicant is Orange Barrel Media. The proposed use is corporate offices. It received the Development Commission Recommendation for Approval and the Franklinton Area Commission Recommendation for Approval, and finally, the City Department Recommendation for Approval. And in this rezoning, Orange Barrel is moving their corporate offices onto a site that was a former concrete plant. So we appreciate their moving their offices to this area in Franklinton, and we look forward to their business within that area. And if there's no questions or comments, I'd like to first to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I would like to amend to emergency.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And finally, I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
845-2013, to rezone 3789 Fisher Road, being 8.5 plus or minus acres, located on the south side of Fisher Road, 607 feet east of Gaderly Drive, from R. Rural District to M. 2 Manufacturing District. The applicant is Jim Lincoln. The proposed use is industrial use. It received the Development Commission Recommendation for Approval, the Greater Hilltop Area Commission Recommendation for Approval, and finally, it did receive the City Department Recommendation for Approval. If there are no questions or comments, I'd like to first to amend, as submitted to the clerk.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And that is all we have in zoning tonight, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Miller. Nothing else come before the zoning committee this evening. I had to entertain a motion to adjourn regular meeting number 22.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Regular meeting number 22 is adjourned. I'd entertain a motion to reconvene regular meeting number 21.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We are reconvened, and our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Public Safety and Judiciary, I have the following ordinances, beginning with ordinance 0789, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to modify and increase the towing contract with Metropolitan Towing and Storage, Inc., for the Division of Police, to authorize the expenditure of $150,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This will increase the amount of funds on the contract through April 30 of 2013. This modification and increase in funding is needed until the current bid for towing services can be resolved within the courts. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0807-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Public Safety to enter into a maintenance contract with Morpho Track, Inc., for the Division of Police's Automated Fingerprint Identification System, AFIS, in accordance with provisions of sole source procurement, to authorize the expenditure of $491,160 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. In 2008, the Division entered into a maintenance contract, and this ordinance is requesting to enter into a new contract that has the option to be renewed for three additional one-year terms at the price set out in the scope of services and also to set up funding for maintenance. A total of $491,160 will cover the cost of the maintenance. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0867-2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Finance and Management to execute those documents necessary to enter into contracts for the acquisition of an extended warranty service agreement for the Division of Fire, Bomb Squads, Radiation Equipment in accordance with sole source procurement with FLIR Radiation, Inc., utilize- accordance with sole source procurement with FLIR Radiation, Inc., utilizing Homeland Security grant funds, and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Division of Fire was awarded a grant from the Department of Homeland Security to acquire extended warranty services on six radiation detection equipment purchased by the Fires Bomb Squad Unit. The total cost of this acquisition will be $24,800, the payment of which will be issued by FCEMA. And we appreciate the support. Again, these times, we're adding additional security for all of our continued protection and safety during events and large gatherings of people. If there are any other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0876-2013, to appropriate $13,618 within the Special Income Tax Fund to authorize a municipal court clerk to enter into a contract with Soft Warehouse International Corporation for the purchase of McAfee firewalls and to authorize expenditure of $13,618 from the Special Income Tax Fund for the municipal court clerk's office and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have this evening in Public Safety and Judiciary.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. In Public Service and Transportation this evening, we have ordinance 0759-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse AEP, AT&amp;T, Columbia Gas, and other utilities for utility relocation costs incurred in conjunction with the Parsons Schottstein's Revitalization Southern Gateway Utility Relocation Project for the Development Department, and to cancel two auditor certificates, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, and to authorize the transfer of cash between projects within the same fund, and to appropriate and authorize the expenditure of up to $225,000 within the Northland and Other Acquisition Fund 735, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I will move to remove this from the table by voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Ginther.
Yes.
Is this by voice vote?
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley?
Yes.
Tyson? President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0765-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds in appropriation with the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with American Structure Plant for engineering design, technical and surveying services in connection with the arterial street rehabilitation Refugee Road Gender to Heinz project, and to authorize the expenditure of $400,000 from the Streets and Highway Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. This project will make the intersection of Refugee Road and Heinz Road safe for both pedestrians and motorists. Currently, railroad tracks are right on the intersection of Refugee Road and Heinz Road. This project will change that by realigning Heinz Road to create a new intersection farther away from the tracks. The project will also include a construction of a new bridge that will be built over Blacklight Creek to accommodate the alignment of Heinz Road. A new sidewalk or a shared use path will also be included in this project to increase pedestrian safety. This is one of the two different projects that will improve pedestrian safety on Refugee Road. A separate project not covered in this legislation will make improvements to the two sections to the immediate west of this project. The project will widen all four legs of the intersection of Refugee Road and Gender Road. The widening will allow for the installation of additional through and turn lanes and to reduce congestion and increase safety for everyone, including pedestrians. This project will include a crosswalk with flashing yellow light Refugee Road and Long Road in front of the YMCA where a pedestrian was struck and killed in September of 2011. This project will also add a sidewalk and a shared use path along Refugee Road. The project is tentatively scheduled for construction in 2016, and I would like to thank Director Kelsey and his team for their leadership on this project. This is another example of coordination between intergovernmental agencies in order to be efficient and effective. If there are no questions or comments, I urge your support for this ordinance, and I move for vote.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all we have in Public Service and Transportation. I would like to move on to Public Utilities. In Public Utilities this evening, we have ordinance 0550-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to pay joint use of poles rental fees to Ohio Power Company, DBA, AEP, to, in accordance with the terms of an existing agreement, and to modify said agreement, to authorize the expenditure not exceeding $168,690 from the Electricity Operating Fund to consent to the assignment of the agreement for joint use of poles by Columbus Southern Power and to Ohio Power Company, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move to remove from the table.
By voice vote. Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley?
Yes.
Tyson? President Ginther.
And move for passage by voice vote.
Craig? Klein? Miller? Mills? Paley? Tyson? President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 0610-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Darby Creek Excavating, Incorporated, for the Caneer Road Area Waterline Improvement Project for the Division of Water, to provide for payment of inspection, material testing, and related services to the Design and Construction Division, and to authorize and transfer expenditure of up to $3,012,337.49 within the Water Build American Bonds Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, we have ordinance 0663-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Capital Plumbing and Mechanical, Incorporated, and the TFHEB, Incorporated, DBA, The Water Works, for the Project Dry Basement Program, to authorize the transfer and expenditure of $458,238 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements project. The purpose of the Project Dry Basement Program is to reduce water in the basement occurrences in residential homes in the city of Columbus. This program was implemented in 2004 and authorized the Director of Public Utilities to enter into necessary agreements with homeowners and contracts with licensed plumbers to perform work related to the installation of devices that are appropriate for the elimination of these occurrences. Since the program began, the city has spent $4 million, and it has installed 711 valves. The program will cover the costs of an approved backflow prevention device for single and two-family homes in Columbus that have experienced sewer backups from surcharging from the public sewer system during wet weather or blockages. These devices typically include approved backwater prevention valve, and some instances, a sump pump may be necessary, and other devices may be considered, if deemed necessary, to protect a resident from future water in the basement incidents. There are no costs to residents if this solution is the installation of devices by the city of Columbus. To be eligible, the city has to have documented that a backup was caused in a city line, and to report basement backups, you can call 645-7102, and this is operated 24 hours a day. I would like to thank Director Davies and his team for their leadership on this program, and if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0784-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to pay the State of Ohio Treasure Department of Natural Resources for operation and maintenance services and water entitlement for the Allen Creek Reservoir for the Division of Water, and to authorize the expenditure of $1,242,056.18 from the Water Systems Operating Fund. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
The following ordinances, 080008080829083408470849, is the Department of Public Utilities is in the process of reconsidering its 40-year plan to eliminate sewer overflows known as the Wet Weather Management Plan. The department is evaluating whether it can eliminate overflow by reducing excessive clean water from getting into the sanitary sewers and by building green infrastructure to treat storm water. The department believes that this will be a better investment for the city than the current path, which calls for tunnels. As part of this evaluation, the department is conducting a study of a pilot project in Clintonville. These six ordinances will allow the department to hire six engineering firms to design solutions, including green infrastructure, to help eliminate the sewer overflow in Wettstone Park. The city committed to the Ohio EPA that we would do this pilot project as part of the negotiations that allowed the city to postpone construction of the next sewer tunnel. I would like to thank Director Davies and his team for their leadership on this project, and its innovative, and all the engineers involved with the project. So with that said, I will move on to ordinance 0800-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement for the professional engineering services with Brown and Caldwell, Ohio, LLC, for the Cook-Glenmont Integrated Solution Project, and to transfer within and expend up to $905,490.09 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvement project, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0803-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Fur Powell Construction, USA, LLC, for the Little Avenue Area Waterline Improvements Project for the Division of Water, and to authorize a transfer and expenditure of up to $2,537,141.20 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bond Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And next, I have 0808-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement for professional engineering services with Astrand Associates, Incorporated, for the Morse-Dominion Integrated Solutions Project, and to transfer within and expend up to $1,344,735.12 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0829-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement for professional engineering services with EMHNT for the Westheimer Indian Springs Integrated Solution Project, and to transfer within and expend up to $1,220,773.21 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0834-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement for the professional engineering services with Burgess and Niple, Incorporated, for the Schrayer Springs Integrated Solutions Project, to transfer within and expend up to $1,016,138.88 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligations Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 0847-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter to an engineering agreement with StanTech Consulting Services for the Blenheim-Glenco Integrated Solutions Project, to transfer within and expend up to $1,706,877.8 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
And finally, I have ordinance 0849-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an engineering agreement with URS Corporation for the Overbrook-Chatham Integrated Solutions Project, to transfer within and expend up to $1,212,876.09 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all we have in Public Utilities this evening. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. If there's nothing else to come before council this evening, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig, Klein, Miller, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjournment. We do have five non-agenda speakers.